Okay.
Why the I see Donna.
Claudia.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I just got a call from the court reporter. She's saying she can't get in, but have we opened it up now to?
What is her name?
Donna Arnold, she's on the list of attendees.
Yeah, Donna Arnold.
You should be able to move her.
I'm just gonna let her know that. Step away. Oh, there she is. Never mind. I see her. At least I see her name anyway.
I transferred her.
Okay.
Donna, are you ready to go?
Yes, sir. Thank you for letting me in.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically by a Zoom on February 23rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on February 18th, 2022, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically by a Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same. Oops, wait. By transmitting a copy of same. That's great. To the, hold on, hold on. By transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof.
We just started meeting now.
With the Clerk of Princeton, notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Sorry about that little break. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Coulson here. Mr. Davich.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Schreiber.
Here.
Mr. Tanenbaum. Ms. Chen. Mr. Stein.
I'm here.
Ms. Donna.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen.
Yes, here.
Thank you.
So I guess our first order of business is the the end of the year to ZBA report. Derek.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The end of the year, ZBA report.
I think Steve. Steve, this month. I think it was presented the last time. I think I had held it up. I was considering maybe proposing adding something which I'm not going to do, so I'm fine with it as presented.
Okay. What do we do? Derek, Karen, do we vote on this?
Uh, yeah, I think I think we'll take a roll call though. That makes sense. So we need a motion in a second and then.
Second, anyone?
I'll second it. Michael Floyd.
Claudia, who moved it?
Steven, I believe, and Michael seconded it.
Do we do a roll call one by one or Karen?
Yeah. Um, yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, we have we have six resolutions this evening. The first one is 25 Lidle Street, Block 15.02, Lot 688. I'm sorry, the case number is Z21-028. The resolution was in your packet. So are there any questions or comments on the resolution? If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move provo, Lloyd.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Eve Coulson.
Okay, Claudia.
Okay. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen? Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, our next case is Z21-130, 183 Kyler Road, Block 7201, Lot 4. Again, the resolution is in your packet.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second Davich.
Okay. Claudia.
Coulson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next, next resolution, case Z21-146, 144 Quaker Road, Block 9901, Lot 6. Questions, comments, motions?
I have 140 actually, but.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 140.
Yep.
Okay.
I move to approve it. Second.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next case. N. Morgan Place, Block 6802, Lot 26.
I'll move it. Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Eve Coulson. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Case Z21-148, 127 Fitz Randolph Road, Block 50.01, Lot 9.03.
I'll move it. Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, last resolution, Z21-122, 92 Gulick Road, Block 4701, Lot 20.
I'll move it. Michael Floyd.
You second. Schreiber.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Davich?
Muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have three hearings this evening. Four hearings this evening. Okay, the first one is 19, it's case Z21-132, 19 Marion Road East, Block 4703, Lot 42. Derek, would you like to read your memo, please? Or summarize?
Well, we carried this case from the last hearing regarding issues with a neighboring property.
Right.
And I haven't received any other communications or information on the case, so I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So do we carry this to the next thing, to the next hearing or what?
Mr. The attorney's there.
Yeah, I think the applicant's attorney is with us. We just have to let him into the meeting. There he is. There he is.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just give a brief summary of where we are and what we've done since the last meeting so we can, I guess, bring this to conclusion? I know you have a full agenda. I don't want to take up too much time.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, sure. So we had the applicant, Mike Gigan and Sheila Morrissey, introduce themselves and explain the purpose of this application, which is to renovate a portion of the existing single-family home to make it more functional for the later stages of their life. What we're searching for, or what we're asking the board for, are two variances. They are both pre-existing conditions. First is a slightly undersized lot, the second being that there is an existing non-conformity with respect to the garage setback. We had our architect walk our board through their renderings and the plans, and we had our planner, Jim Kyle, provide testimony as to the positive and negative criteria for the applications and the reasons that he believes that the board should and could be granting these variances. We then opened up the application to public comment. There was only one public comment, which was from Richard Kahn, who happens to be a former member of this board, and he voiced support for granting this application. The board closed public comment and went to executive session where we engaged in a discussion whether adjacent properties could be acquired or not. There is only one property adjacent to the applicant's property that had acreage that could theoretically be subdivided and added to applicant's property to make it compliant with the bulk lot size regulations. Since that meeting, we've approached this property owner to confirm that they do not want to convey the property. They have confirmed that to us and we can have the applicant testify to that, and I also have a signed letter confirming that as well, which I can submit to evidence by sharing my screen, and I can also email it to the professionals if necessary. So that was the, that was the reason we had continued the meeting last time so that we could have time to get this confirmation that we were unable to obtain additional lot size to make the lot conforming to demonstrate the proper hardship. So at this point, we, we believe the board would resume the executive session, and we request that the board grant the variances, and if the board requests, I'm happy to share my screen. I guess I would request to share my screen just to enter that letter into evidence.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see. I think we'd all like to see the letter just to.
Yeah.
It should have been, it should have been submitted prior to the meeting, but that's, but, so if you can put it on the screen, that would be good.
Sure. Can the board, can the board see the screen?
Yes.
Yes. So this is the letter that was, is countersigned by the neighbors confirming that they're the owners of the property and they have no interest in selling their portion of the property to us. And this was also confirmed orally as well. So with, with this, we've confirmed that there's no possible way for applicants to obtain additional area in order to make the lot compliant with the bulk regulations.
Okay. Can you get an original letter to Mr. Bridger?
I can do that, yes.
We get this. Yes, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions on this letter or just?
Mr. De Pasquale, you said that the neighbors, I think it's, I'm looking at the letter, Mr. and Mrs. Donaldson also confirmed, confirmed this orally to your clients? Did I hear that correctly?
I'd like to. Sheila and Mike, are you, are you on?
Yes, we're here. Yes, to our builder.
Mr. Gigan and Ms. Morrissey will just swear you in again. Do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. And I guess my question was, did Mr. and Mrs. Donaldson also advise you of this verbally?
They confirmed it to our builder.
It's confirmed to Joe Angelo. Our former neighbor and builder.
And the builders here can testify to that as well.
Okay, board members, you want to, you want to hear this from the builder too or?
I would think we want to hear it from the source, so yeah.
Okay, where's your, is your builder?
Yeah, his name's Joe Angelo, and he should be in the audience.
Okay.
It was like you joined. It's Joseph Angelo.
Am I on?
Mr. Angelo, well, we hear you. We can't see you.
Can't see me. Be heard but not seen, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you are. Mr. Angelo, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. And you are the builder who is renovating the property for the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and now, Mr. De Pasquale, I'll let you.
Yeah, sure. So, Mr. Angelo, you approached the neighbors, the Donaldsons, and confirmed with them that they're unwilling to sell the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then that confirmation resulted in them countersigning this letter and providing it to us, confirming that they have no interest in selling a portion of their property to us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. De Pasquale, why don't we mark this? My notes show at our last meeting, we had an Exhibit A1, so I guess this would be Exhibit A2?
Yes, please.
And is there a date on the letter? I don't. There we, okay.
The letter's dated February 15.
All right.
And I'll provide an original to Mr. Bridger's office.
You can quit sharing your screen.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. De Pasquale?
No, Mr. Chairman, that was the only item that, that we requested time to go retrieve before the board made their decision.
Okay. Board members, do you have any question of any of the three witnesses we heard from this evening? Or on the case in general? Okay. I believe, did we, we did have the public portion already. So at this point, I guess, let's bring it to a vote. Well, if somebody makes a motion, we'll.
Well, actually, I guess I do have a point of discussion, and it's regarding the setback on the garage, the variance from it. And for me, and it's interesting, you have Derek's memo that considers this permit the construction of a new home. We have the attorney who refers to it, both in his submissions and his testimony, that it's remodeling of an existing home. We had testimony in response to my question on if you're retaining any of the walls or any of the, whether exterior or interior. The answer was no. I had actually asked that question to support, for me, supporting the variance on the garage and the setback requirement. So I have a, you know, you can call for the vote. I will not be voting for the setback variance for those reasons.
Okay.
You want to try and make these two, maybe we should vote on each variance separately, unless, Michael, your position is, because they also they also need a lot area variance.
Yeah, I'm fine with a lot area variance.
All right. Well, then, would somebody like to move these as separate variant motions?
Yeah, whatever's proper.
Okay.
I think they did present evidence that, and an explanation of moving the garage back from a, from a practical standpoint, from a design standpoint, was a little bit of a problem, obviously not insurmountable, but I think we looked at it the last time and felt that it was reasonable. So, all right.
I move we accept this, this whole total.
All right, are, is the board amenable to doing this as two separate motions, meaning one motion is to approve the water variance? Then the second motion would be to approve the.
We don't normally do that, do we?
We don't, but tonight we have at least one member indicating that they're amenable to one variance but not the other. So that's why I suggested it, because otherwise it makes the vote a little bit complicated, because then Michael will need to indicate, well, I'm voting for part and not the rest of it. So that's why I suggested, let's make it two separate motions.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second.
Is that for the light area variance?
No, we're talking about.
For the whole thing together.
Don't, don't we often have more than one and one?
No.
Well, let, okay, sure.
An applicant does not object to separate votes. If that's what the board chooses to do.
So do you want to withdraw the motion and let's go to separate motions?
Sure. I withdraw my motion. So I move we, we accept a lot area motion first, variance first.
I'll second that.
Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yeah.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, lot area is approved.
Okay, do we have someone, would someone like to make a motion on the bulk?
I move we accept the bulk variance, variance.
For the, for the garage, right? Yeah.
For the garage.
I'll second.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
This, Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next case is 44 Morgan Place, Lot 6802, or Block 6802, Lot 21. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Mr. Bridger, we'll just make sure you're sworn in for the evening. You swear from your testimony will be truthful.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
And I'll note that the noticing is in order for this application, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Good evening. The original owner of this property received approval for lot area, lot frontage, and a lot depth setback variances for the construction of a new home. On July 22nd, 2018, they were memorialized on August 22nd, 2018, and published on the 31st of August, same year. The previous owner obtained a zoning permit and approved engineering plans on April 4th, 2019. The one-year period of approval under the variance ended on August 31st, 2019. The previous owner sold the property to the applicant at the end of 2021. The governor issued an executive order 244 commencing in March 2020, which supported land use development applications and projects of time extension as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The extension period ended June 4th, 2021, and had a protective period that ran six months after that date. The applicant is seeking the extension of the original approval pursuant to Section 10B 328, which is the township by time extension, says in cases that of variances that involve the issuance of construction permits, variances shall terminate one year after the granting of the variance unless a construction permit is applied for within such one-year period or within such greater time as the Board of Adjustment shall grant upon showing a good cause made by the applicant. Time limitations have been fixed in accordance with the foregoing. That have been fixed in accordance with the foregoing may thereafter be extended upon application to the Board of Adjustment with notice as required for variance hearings provided that the applicant shall be application will be made prior to the expiration of the time limitation sought to be extended upon a showing of good cause made by the applicant before the Board of Adjustment, the board may extend the time limitation by resolution. There have been several changes since the original approval in the land use ordinance regarding neighborhood character. The garage is a front-facing garage and extends 9.7 feet from the front of the nearest facade. As you're aware, this garage would need to be set back under the current ordinance today, 12 feet to the nearest portion of the front facade, as the covered porch allows a four-foot reduction. And the proposed driveway width is 15 feet, which exceeds the maximum permitted width of 10 feet as per Section 10B 2552I3C. And the stormwater management system approved in the plan is a structured system and was improved in part of the enactment of the Stormwater Ordinance 202039, which only permits structured stormwater management systems when it can be demonstrated to the the land use engineer that greener, best method. the land use engineer that greener, uh, best method practices such as green swales, green roots, previous paving system, bio retention systems, rain gardens, and small-scale infiltration systems, basins cannot be adequately used to handle this stormwater. That's my memo. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address that.
So they, so the, the, this application had to be filed by what date? This, this granting of additional time?
Well, there's a, there's a gap from the variance ended August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And in twenty twenty, that was the COVID, uh, extension period. So there's a six-month gap of time from when the COVID protection would have taken effect if they filed the application or filed it for a building permit, construction permit.
Okay, all right. All right. Any questions of Mr. Bridger? So who's representing the, uh, Mr. Kennedy? Okay.
If we could, we also have Claudia, the principal from the applicant, Ralston, is in the room. We could have him elevated as well. Um, and you know, as is our practice, I do have a few slides that we provided to kind of go through this. As he's coming forward, um, just want to first, thank you. Good evening. I'll try to be quick. There's not really much to talk about here. As Mr. Bridger said, this is a situation where there was a project approved. Uh, unfortunately, uh, my client purchased the project and was ready to go finally at the end of last year. The permit extension, you know, from the governor's executive order ended uh, really around the time that he was purchasing this, uh, as well as you know, his attempts to get in, uh, towards the end of last year with filing uh, for his construction permits. I think there was some confusion between the seller, frankly, uh, or or confusion may be a kind word. Less than forthright information uh, about, uh, the status of the approvals and whether he had pulled permits, he had put in for a zoning permit, but that's certainly not the same thing and not something that allows the, uh, the approvals to be extended. Uh, so a purchaser purchased this, uh, tried to get in to build the approved project as quickly as he could. He'll tell you the, the neighbors are out there every day hoping that he can get started because the product, you know, the houses and needs some, some help. He's very much looking to to do that and and that's why we seek this extension. I'm going to introduce, um, see.
Mr. Kennedy, do you want to, do you want to put Mr.
I do.
Ram roots. Can't see him at the moment.
Also, if you could turn your camera on and unmute yourself, uh, we'll introduce you and have ask that you be sworn in tonight.
Sure, I'm trying to get my, I'm driving, I'm on the road, I pulled over. But I'm trying to see how I can get myself on the screen here.
Well, we're gonna need to see you, unfortunately.
I know, I'm trying here, let me see. Do I get my Just give me one second.
Well, he's doing that. If we could, I guess just for the record, Mark, we do have a slide deck that we provided in advance. I guess that would be exhibit A one. Aha.
There you are.
Well, uh, unfortunately, we can't hear you.
Mute.
There you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, all right.
Mr. Ramruth, just to confirm, um, well, let me first swear you in, uh, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Absolutely.
All right, and you are the managing member of forty-four Morgan LLC, which is the owner and applicant this evening. Is that correct?
That's totally correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ralston, now we'll go through a few slides just to remind the board. I know this was a couple of years ago. Some of them were, were, were here to approve this, but first, uh, we have a slide that shows where this is, um, uh, just, just outside of, of the borough. To orient the board here. Second, this next slide shows the property outlined in blue with the big arrow towards it. Showing Morgan Place and the, the surrounding properties, all of which are undersized, I believe. Last month, a similar application, uh, at least for a lot size was, was before this board. In two thousand eighteen, I've just highlighted here what the variances that were granted for lot area, lot frontage and lot depth, those are, um, what was granted by this board, um, then, uh, Ralston, uh, then you, you purchased this property at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you have any knowledge or expectation that these approvals had expired at that time?
No, when I bought the property, even before I bought the property, they told me that the whole approval was in place. And that was the reason why I bought it. And I said right away, I spoke to my architect and engineers. And they said, yes, we can keep going with it. And as soon as, um, I purchased the property, I went into township and applied for my building permit. That's when Mr. Bridger told me that, um, oh, this application has been expired. So that's when I start, um, get ball rolling and said, let's, we gotta find out.
I'm having a hard time understanding what he's saying.
I can't, I can't understand it either.
Oh, I'm sorry. So after I purchased the property, I thought that, um, it was already approved. And they, they, they led me to believe that we have all the approvals that, um, all I need to do was submit my billing permits. So I hired my architect, I paid him, you know, to, um, get the plans ready and I took it right into the township right away. That's when Mr. Bridger told me that, uh, the, the variance has expired.
Uh, and then when he told you it was expired, you, you called me and we put an application to extend it, uh, right away and missed and the staff, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, it's a short application, but for hearing it so quickly. And you, I, I imagine talked to the neighbors all the time. Well, what, what are their, uh, not, not without saying what, what they told you. I don't want to introduce any hearsay, but, uh, is there interest in, in, in getting the, um, condition of this property back up to speed? Is there, uh, did the prior owner leave this in a bad condition?
Absolutely. So, um, when I, when I went there and, um, you know, hanging around the property and the neighbors came over and said, are you going to be building soon? I said, yes, I just have to apply for my building permits. And they said, we can't wait. We're so excited. We want this property to be rebuilt, to enhance the neighborhood.
And, and if these approvals were extended, what would you be doing? Immediately filing and, and, um, and constructing the project?
Absolutely. I already have plans. I already have zoning permits ready to go and I will be, um, applying right away.
Um, next, uh, just for the board's edification, I'm, I'm showing a, uh, a clip from the plans that were approved. This is slide five in two thousand eighteen that shows the front elevations of the project. Slide six, again, this is from the approved plans from, from the prior approval that shows the site layout for the project, um, where the house would be located um, and, and where the stormwater, the planned stormwater mitigation would be. Unfortunately, you know, we're here, uh, with, with a purchaser who, uh, unfortunately was sold a, a, a a bad bill of goods. Ultimately, it's on us to, to, to check and uh, perhaps we should have checked further to see whether these have expired or not. His only interest is to get something built there in this neighborhood, uh, you know, spruced up and, and the home that was approved built as soon as possible. Unfortunately, if we were to have to go back and redesign, uh, and seek variances again on a, on a different design, you know, we would be looking at a, a six-plus month process and, and the plans that were previously approved away. Um, that is why we're here seeking, uh, the, the board's, uh, relief. Uh, while he did not know to extend, to seek this extension, um, within that time period, he did act as quickly as possible as soon as he found out and came darn close, um, to that six-month window, uh, following the governor's executive order in December. Not that that would have meant anything really, but he, he did try, um, and as, you know, as soon as he purchased it, uh, proceeded to, to move forward, uh, as soon as he found out, uh, from, from unfortunate news from, from Mr. Bridger, applied for this application, um, the, the hardship essentially would be in, in, in going back to the, to the drawing board considerable, um, and, uh, Ralston, is anything you want to add about the, uh, the cost or expense and, and delay that would, would be caused if we couldn't use the previously approved plans?
Yeah, um, I did, um, get a loan to purchase this property. And I was ready to go ahead and build. And of course, any delays, it's almost three months already. I've been waiting. And, um, it will be tremendous, uh, in the monetary loss.
And, and while you're a, you know, a, a respectful property owner, and I know you're, you're out there making sure that the sidewalks are, are shoveled, and I know that's how you met some of the neighbors, but, you know, is there anything really you can do to this property until you're able to, you know, finish your investment and, and rebuild it? Um, so is, would anything really happen there unfortunately in the next couple of months if we had to go back to the drawing board?
Uh, we can't do nothing really. We got to sit and wait. I'm just hoping that we can approve it and, uh, you know, get going with it.
Thank you. Um, you know, as I, as I started this, uh, I think Mr. Bridger did sum this up, um, pretty, pretty well in his memo. There's not much else to say other than, uh, this purchaser, um, uh, his intention is to, uh, get something, uh, previously proved and, and, you know, nice for that neighborhood, um, to be built. Um, he's ready to go as soon as he can. Um, that could be if, if this board were to grant an extension, that could be, uh, now, if it weren't, um, we'd be looking unfortunately at the, at scrapping those previously approved plans. And you know your schedule, but this sitting, waiting, uh, you know, for, for us to regroup and, and either obtain, uh, new variances, uh, for the pre-existing conditions uh, with revised plans or, or, uh, coming back, uh, seeking formal relief from, uh, any, any changes to, uh, you know, to the, to the zoning code since, uh, this was approved. So with that, I'll thank the board. We were certainly happy to answer any questions about, um, the applicant's diligence or attempts to, to move forward. Uh, we, we, we wish we had been the ones who had, uh, done the prior approvals. Uh, we were not and, and, and just saw this once. Frankly, uh, the applicant found out that, you know, as an LLC, you can't even, you know, proceed yourself. So, uh, not to say that he wouldn't be well-served coming in, making this plea himself, but as an LLC, he has to bring in the attorney. I wish I was there with him earlier to, to, you know, spot these things, uh, that, that's before I, I, I met the applicant. But that, that's, that's the request, the, the hope that this could be, um, advanced and extend, you know, the, the again, what this board saw and approved in Z eighteen eighteen five eighty-five, uh, to be extended and, and allowed for, um, for, I'll say immediate construction. Thanks.
Okay, board members, any question of the applicant or the applicant's attorney?
I, I just want to make sure I understand this, that the person who originally applied, the owner sold to the person who we've just now heard speaking. We did see a plan, but that's not necessarily what's going to be built, but the most, the, the, the last image that we saw is what we're expresses what we, it is that we're approving, or we, is that right?
The images that were shown were from the twenty, uh, the, the prior approval. So, um, that is what is, uh, proposed to be built as, as it was approved then. There are, you know, uh, updates that need to happen, obviously, um, you know, to get plans ready for construction. I think that's what, uh, the applicant meant when he said he had to bring his architect in, but what was approved in twenty eighteen is what the applicant is seeking relief to, to build.
Okay.
From those plans.
So what was presented, the house footprint, the elevations, that is consistent with the approval?
Correct.
Well, it's the same, isn't it, Mr. Kennedy? It, it's the same plans, right?
It's exactly the, the same.
Exactly the same. Eve, I had a question. I was just looking at the result, the prior resolution, which is attached to Derek's memo, and I see you abstained before, but I don't recall why. If you had a reason for abstaining.
I don't either.
Okay, then that's not a problem then. Okay.
It, it does worry me though. Let's see.
I don't remember, I don't remember this house. I remember the property. I was, I don't remember the house.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't remember the house either. I mean, that's why I was asking and Eve, I'm sure was asking, is this the same house that was approved?
Yeah, because I remember the neighbors were, the, because this, this, this neighborhood was had, there was concern about the size of this house because the houses on this neighborhood are all single-story homes. And so I, I don't remember this house.
But it's all, this is, uh, uh, you know, it was intended from the applicant to be kind of turnkey to take what, what they had done and approved and, and
I, I, I don't recall, I, I just don't recall the house. I don't, it's a, yeah. I'm saying it wasn't the right same one.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So Karen, is the standard that we look at as to whether or not to grant an extension, is it, um, good cause?
Yes, because, because the issue for this applicant is the local ordinance and the, the local ordinance, and there is one for the former, we're on the former township, but this property is in the former township and Derek set forth that ordinance in his memo. So it's not in the, the freezing in it, you know, could be a little confusing, but I think it gives the board discretion to, uh, upon a showing of good cause to extend the variance. There is also a requirement in this ordinance that says the applicant should apply for their extension before the, the period expires, but I read this, at least the way it's written, to say, again, if there's good cause, the board can extend that too. If you find that, um, the applicant has, has demonstrated to your satisfaction that there's a good cause, which you would need to articulate for the resolution. Then you could go ahead and, uh, extend the, the variance period because some towns have this kind of ordinance, some don't. But both the former borough and the former township had this ordinance on its books that says if you get a variance and it requires a construction permit, you've got a year to get the permit, construction permit. If you don't, then your variance expires. And you can come in and ask for an extension of that time period, but you need to demonstrate good cause as to why you should get the extension.
Miss, Nick, go ahead, Mike, you can go first.
That's okay, you, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with Mr. Kennedy. Can you just have your client for us, you know, talk to us about what he did regarding the approval that he thought he had? What kind of steps he took for due diligence?
Well, um, Ralston, if you want to dig into that, um, best, best you can, I, I, I wish I was with you at the time. Well, I'll be with you at every one of these going forward, but, uh, if you could talk about what you did, what, what, what you looked for, you know, you, you're, this isn't your first, uh, rodeo, so you, uh, you want to take them through. So you uh you want to take them through uh.
So so what I did, um the first thing I did was asked realtors that um is this approval? I want to see the approval. And they gave me the set of plans and said, these plans are approved by the township. And they gave me the zoning um application, which was also approved. Um but it did not, it did not, it did not show me the um the variance which was expired. So in my mind, I thought the zoning was approved. Um the billing permit was ready to go. Um because I have the plans ready, everything was ready on the plans. And I went ahead and purchased the property. Um and again, after I found out from Mr. Bridger that the um application, the zoning application was. Um uh expired, I called the realtors right away. I said, hey, you sold me something that's not real. That's not, that's not what I bought. And I said, oh, you have to talk to our attorney. You have to get us, get your own attorney and try to figure this out. Um and then when that's when the ball started rolling and I said, wait a minute, I already purchased this property. We can't, I can't rescind. I I don't know how, what to do now. I'm like stuck. So that's when I I I took um um Ryan and I said, you know, I need help. And I I went to the council a few times and I said, what else can I do here? And Mr. Bridger said a few, a couple of times I met him, he said, Ralston, you need to um file for the extension. Go in front of the board and hire an attorney and let's get this.
So were you, yeah, were you aware that there was a variance granted for the property before you bought it?
You know, I was not aware that there was a variance. I thought that the zoning was approved because I'm a builder as well. I I, you know, buy properties and fix and flip them, build. And I know once the zoning is approved, I, in my mind, once zoning is approved. I know that I could just submit billing permits and get my billing permits uh approved per se, you know? I did not know that.
If if I had just asked a follow-up to that, if that's all right, just um, you know, because you saw the zoning permit. So there's there's usually, you know, there's a multi-step process here in pulling construction permits. Um and and usually, if it's an as-of-right project just based on zoning or if there are variances. The process for seeing if this could be built involves a a zoning permit. And and I guess that's what you looked at, right? They had gone to, rather than pulling construction permits, they went back. With their variance approval and those plans and said, can this be built? And and you know, of of course, since it was approved, a zoning permit was issued. But that doesn't extend those uh approvals, unfortunately. But it gives a very clean, short-looking document that says this can be built, unfortunately, for a a property owner to see. Not realizing that it was based on an underlying variance that uh was in various processes of of, you know, extensions under, frankly, the uh. Uh because of COVID uh um and and the governor's executive order. Um but ultimately, um no- nothing in a zoning permit would say this this times out. Yeah.
One of the, excuse me, what did Derek, can I ask you this? What did the zoning permit say? And when was it issued? What day was it issued?
Uh the permit was issued on uh April fourth, two thousand nineteen, and it just says approved.
Okay.
It doesn't have any deadlines or anything like that.
So so the.
Engineering and zoning were both approved in April of two thousand nineteen.
And that's when the, and then the certificate was issued that said it was in conformance. So so when the applicant moved towards his closing, he didn't ask for an update on that? Or his attorney didn't look at that and say this is several years old?
No, we we thought it's all already approved. So we were ready to purchase and um and start building.
No, I I I understand what you're saying, but but your attorney didn't bring it up at the time. You were going to purchase the property or as you got closer to the closing?
No.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yeah, a couple of questions as I try to get this straight. So the 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 variances, um approvals of those. They, the one-year period expired August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And then there was a si- a six-month sort of grace period to to seek an extension. Which would have expired basically February two twenty. So the 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 variance has actually expired prior to the governor's.
Right.
I I think that's in in important for me. The governor's action, it had already expired. Okay, the governor's action came the the following month, whether it was weeks after or whatever in in March of two twenty. So the variants were 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 not in place prior to the governor's action so far. But a question I want to get to, and it's either, well, it's for both Derek and and Ms. Casey. Has there been? Um, you know, the the idea is, well, if we can consider an extension, but also the idea is things do expire. Is there case law where towns or zoning boards have said, no, we're not giving an extension? Because we've passed new zoning rules that are very important to us? And has that been litigated or why? Why are extensions or expiration of extensions enforced? On the other hand, why, you know, yeah, what's the reason? Is there any case law? Because.
I'm I'm not aware of any case law, Michael, because uh this is very much a matter of local ordinance. Uh so I'm not aware of any. Uh the other one I just wanted to make is that. The, under the Permit Extension Act of two thousand twenty, which I think is what Derek was referring to in his memo. In order for that to apply, an approval had to be in effect at that time. So for this applicant, based on our ordinance, the. The one-year period after they got their variance, as Derek says in his memo, that ended on August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. So um it 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 was not in effect. So that's because staff did look at this to figure out, well, maybe it had been extended already, but it was not. And I'm not aware of any case law that looks at this particular issue. It's it's a matter of of falling within the board's discretion and and. The the fact that zoning has changed. I think that's certainly one factor the board can take into account. I guess the other factors would be. Do you think, you know, what do you consider to be good cause? So you could say good cause could be anything from. Things that an applicant doesn't have control over, or they might have been very ill, somebody died. Provided with wrong information by the town. I mean, there's sort of a a range of things that you might say, well, that's that's good cause. I I I I accept that. But that's a long answer to your question, which was, is there any case?
Right.
I'm not aware of any, so.
But, you know, the 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 previous owner. The 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 previous owner, I guess, had from, basically, if if the variances expired with a six-month grace period. February of two two thousand twenty. Had until he sold the property to come in and get an extension. This this is not just from December of twenty-one, when this this new owner bought it. There's there's a whole gap in there.
It's two years.
Yeah. It's over two years, yeah.
Yeah, so that's that's a problem. I, you know, I I look at, I know stormwater. And I know we're not in executive session, but as we try to flat, fresh flush this out. You know, stormwater's gotten to be a big thing with the municipality. And, you know, and actually, I guess, where the state ordinance changed, or was it the the municipal on stormwater? The municipal. Okay, thank you. But, you know, those were changed and changed for a purpose, so that's that's the struggle here.
Derek, just a question for the board's guidance. The stormwater management system would be under the review and approval. Of the engineer, correct? The municipal engineer?
Correct.
All right, so if this, if the applicant were to come back in with. Seeking current variances. Would they need one for stormwater management, or would that simply be it must comply? And it will have to get approval by the engineer?
They'd have to demonstrate that they couldn't use a structured system um to handle the stormwater on site and that. Or they'd have to demonstrate that there weren't other green best practices such as swales, rain gardens, bioretention basins. That could be used instead um of the structured system.
But that's something they would be demonstrating to the engineering department?
Correct.
Okay, so u- under either set of circumstances here. They wouldn't be asking for a variance from this board, right?
Correct.
Uh but I mean, keeping in mind, though, that. The stormwater management system could affect the design of the house, so this would be on the applicant to um. Present a design that could accommodate the kind of stormwater management system that they intend to seek approval for, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so the the real change was with respect to neighborhood character. That's the change that occurred. Okay, okay.
Does this go to public comments, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions of board members of the attorney or the applicant? Or Mr. Kennedy, do you want to add anything before we open it up to the public?
Um, I'll I'll just thank Ms. Casey for, I I think that last revelation was was helpful of looking just at the difference between what was. Previously approved and what would happen now if we came back in for a fresh set of bulk variances. I think that was actually very helpful to kind of parse that piece out. I'll also say, I agree with her that I'm I'm also not aware of any case law on this. It it's a local issue. And I guess the idea is that, you know, in 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 concept, these land use approvals and variances are approved and then run with the land. It is the town's decision locally to limit them. Um um so again, it's a very local issue and and most places, and many places don't have any time restrictions um on them. Um it's it's a function of of the town managing its construction process rather than land use law. So by extending it, it really does um, you know, freeze the application back in time. You know, the the time of the application rule that we talk about that puts a puts the rules in effect to the time something is brought. In in many places, it maybe is not indefinite, but but it extends a bit, and it's a local choice to put that time period on it. So there, you know, I I agree with Ms. Casey that there's, because of that, there's not a lot or maybe any any thinking on that. But that's, you know, the the core of those variances that they they do are are something that's approved and could be relied upon. And that that's something that has some some time with it. Except when the the local municipality decides to have a shorter period as Prin- you know, as Princeton has here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um if there's no other questions of the attorney or the applicant. We'll we'll open it to the public, for the public portion of the hearing. Uh Claudia, Stephen, is there anyone in the public who's indicated they want to speak on this application?
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll just give it a minute here and uh. Or a couple of seconds. Okay, since we have no one who's indicated they want to speak, then we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Kennedy, we're going to go into executive session after this, but uh do you want to add anything else?
Uh I again, thank you for considering this. It it's a it's a very unfortunate situation. Um I'm I'm happy to hear from the reaction that not one that comes up often um for this board, which is which is good. Um uh you know, the 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 piece of it that I think um underlies, one, the the diligence of the application. And and perhaps the the cause here is the the disconnect, I think, in the building process between the variance approval. And the zoning permit. In many places, including Princeton, when something is built as of right without a variance, you go in for that process. And you put in uh uh, you know, your your plans and and Derek or his counterparts in other towns say, yes, you can do that. Um when there's a variance, he's saying that because, yeah, there was a variance granted, and that's why it's permitted. But there's no difference in that response on the zoning permit between, yes, you know, the R-five zone just allows what you've asked for. Or, yes, um you can do this, but because we granted a variance in the past, and that variance has a clock on it. So it it is a little different than um uh than perhaps every, you know, every possible situation. Because the prior owner, for whatever reason, took the uh, you know, the step to kind of whitewash or, you know, launder the approval. With this zoning permit approval that looked like, hey, this is just ready to go. Um and a lot of people, frankly, perhaps myself included, and this is my field, might not have looked much beyond there. Um of course, I I do know how how friendly this town is, and I would have just called Derek and he would have told me the answer. Uh not everyone realizes that most towns aren't like that, and if you're not used to working dealing with 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 staff here, you may not think that you're going to get a. Good response or or helpful assistance there. But I I'll say that that's the 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 difference here, perhaps, is that the prior owner laundered this to an extent through the zoning permit. And someone looking at a zoning permit might think this was just as-of-right, um when in fact, variances were were granted for it. Uh again, thank you for considering this and and your time. I think we talked about this a little bit more than I was expecting, so I I I'm hopeful we uh we can. Get through the rest of your document tonight. So thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, uh we're going to go into executive session. Um comments, questions on the board, basis of discussion? Well, I mean, I maybe I can start. Um it seems to have been two years from the time that the extension expired to today. Um shortened by the time that the applicant applied. What concerns me is our ordinances have changed. And the house that's proposed now, uh in theory, couldn't be built right now without variances. And uh and I do understand that the 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 problem that the owner faces. Um and I can appreciate that. It's a, it's a significant one. Um but I have to believe and and that in the process of purchasing the property. That the attorney handling the purchase would have brought this up. I mean, this is not, this is not a, this is a uh, you know, not an unusual condition. I mean, it's a, it's you, it's unique to our municipality. But again, with everything going on with COVID and extensions and everything else. It would seem to me that relying on something that was several years old. Because typically, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, when we approve something, they have, the applicant has a certain amount, putting aside COVID. And the extensions, doesn't the applicant have a certain period of time they have to perfect everything or else come back to us and ask for an extension?
Yeah, they had they had basically perfected. Yeah, they, they had basically perfected everything except they didn't file a. A building permit, if they filed a building permit, then that's good for a year from that point on.
But they never did that.
No.
And they didn't come back to us and ask for an extension? Because they didn't file for a permit?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so, I mean, it's, it's. Maybe for lack of a better term, it's deceptive on the part of the previous owner. Okay. Any other comments?
Um, I, I have a.
Go ahead.
Oh, thanks, Karen, I, I have a question for you, um. The, um, the variance. Um, that was granted in 2018, would that have been filed? In the county clerk's office so that it would have been picked up on a title search by the. Attorney for the buyer?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it would be part of. If someone had made an offer request, you would have received it if you had contacted the um. Zoning staff. And made an inquiry that would have, I'm sure, provided a copy of the resolution. Um. It may be, I don't, I, I can't speak for the building department, but again, if an inquiry was made, did this property receive variances? Um. That, that was on file with the town, so the resolution described the three variances that. The property received. Uh, but. I, I don't know why it would have been recorded with the county clerk.
Okay, so I gather though that, that no inquiry was made to the planning of, the zoning officer, to Mr. Bridger, or anyone in the zoning department?
I, I was, uh. I mean, it's my understanding that Mr. Ramrip contacted me as soon as he. Purchased the property to file permits to. To proceed.
After the closing.
Right.
Yeah.
George? Think you're.
The wisdom.
Can't hear you, George.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you hear me? No, a little, uh.
Little bit, little louder.
Little louder, okay, basically, the, the wisdom of having a time limit, um, which was referenced by, um. Applicant's attorney. You know. As, this case to me illustrates why it's necessary to have a time limit. Because ordinances can change, and in the absence of any particular time limit, how long could it extend? Years, decades, I mean, you can't just have.
Yeah, and the absence of a time limit, then it would run with the land. And that's it.
And it would run forever, that's my point.
Correct. It would.
Even if all manner of, all manner of ordinance have changed. And so, something like six months sounds like a reasonable time to me. Frankly, I, I'm not sure I have any problem with any of the variances if they come back with them. But, but I'd like to see it in the context of current town ordinances. So, that's my thought. Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
I'm somewhat ambivalent about it because I'm. I agree with George, I, I agree with all the comments that have been made, but I wonder if they come back in two months or three months, they're going to come back and ask for. Same variances. The only difference will be the, the garage would be set back ten feet. Right? So I'm not sure that the public good is being served by delaying this. But, but I'm, I am absolutely ambivalent.
I, you know, and I was, I've been. Really trying to remember exactly, and I, it, what comes to me about why did I abstain, which I rarely maybe. Never have done, except that one time, I'm not sure. Um, but I, I'm thinking about when we saw the. The drawing, um, the rendering and the. I, I think it had to do with trees coming down, and I think it had to do maybe with the circular drive and. Sort of some, I, I, I want to be careful because I'm just drawing on. Memory, but I, I kind of have a memory of a lot of neighbors coming in and. Being concerned about, you know, the scale of the house relative to the rest of the neighborhood, so. I think I must have been ambivalent then enough to just neither say yes nor no. Um, and I do wonder, I'm just not sure right now. It might be that if they come back in two months, and I know we've got a lot of cases to deal with right now. Um, that it would be kind of the same circumstance, but I'm not sure whether there are any new. Are there any new very, uh, new ordinances that are, would. Change how we would look at this, I, I just don't.
Well, if nothing else, neighborhood character.
The garage, the garage would have to be pushed back eight feet, and that would change the whole structure of the house, if you look at the. Facade and you look at the plan view, you can see that. The garage is tucked in that front right cor, front left corner, and that's going to have to change dramatically, which would impact the back of the house.
What about the, um, stormwater?
That too, and I remember there's a creek in the back of this yard property, isn't there? There's a creek running behind it.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember, the, the neighbors were up in ours because there's, there is one other two-story house on the street, but most of the houses are. Small one-story houses, and I, there was quite a bit of public comment, but. Yeah, I just don't remember the house, I don't remember the house, but that doesn't, that's another here, they're there, but. Um, the fact that the garage is up front. It, it, it would, it would have to be changed in order to meet our current ordinance.
Most probably, the house would have to be redesigned.
Derek, Derek, were the neighbors notified about this hearing tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I mean, I haven't.
I haven't received any comments from the neighbors regarding this application, but I have received comments. During the ownership of the previous. Entity that owned the property for lack of maintenance at the property. Numerous calls.
Well, I remember a lot of neighbors were here, but it, it pawns on me that there aren't any tonight, so it's kind of like. That they do want to get it done. Many have accepted it.
Could be.
I don't.
So I guess one, one other question, and, and I guess, I think, uh, Michael asked this. Something similar, so when this, if, if we do approve it. If, and it comes back in, and Derek, you pass it on to building. Uh, you pass it on to engineering. Is that right? And it would be up to, uh, engineering to approve the stormwater system as proposed?
No, I think the engineer would make the applicant prove that the only system that can work there is a. Structured system and that a rain garden wouldn't work, you see. I, I don't want to give testimony for the engineer, but he did say that. There was options, there were options that could be done, um. As opposed to the, uh, the structured system.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But I mean, I saw some discussion that needs to.
Sure. Okay. Alright. Um, any other discussion? Yes, it is a, it is a tricky situation, um. You know, I, I. I'm concerned. About. Putting the owner, quite frankly, in a difficult situation, but. Yeah. It's, uh. Not his fault, nor is it our fault, um. So, okay, that was my two cents worth. Well, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to, does somebody want to make a motion? One way or the other, or do we want to continue discussion? Or do we want to ask for more information? What do we want to do?
If, if I might suggest that if, if the board is disinclined to grant the extension. Um, that perhaps it would behoove the, the finality of coming to a solution not to. Issue that decision tonight. Um, but allow the applicant to regroup and, and see if we could come back. Um, and, and seek some combination of actual variances on notice to the neighbors. Rather than restart a brand-new project, which would certainly require at the very least. The, you know, th, these are pre-existing non-conforming lots, so there's, there's no conforming home that could ever be built here. It will always require a trip to this board. Um, this, while there is a pending application. Um, uh, the, the full denial, again, if that's what the board is inclined to do, would cause us to. Go back, you know, delay several additional months. Perhaps carrying this while we amend our application for ver, uh. For additional variances or to, with a slight, with a design change. Um, may benefit the neighborhood and the applicant more than, uh, than a denial, if, if that's what the board is. Laying to it.
It's, it's quite frankly up to you. To ask us to do that, if you would like to carry this, I mean, you've heard the comment. I mean, I've heard the comments, other board members have heard it, I don't know how anybody is going to vote right now. Um, so it's, it's your call, if you'd like to ask for a continuance. Or if you'd like to.
Just one, just a technical question, so if it's carried. To next month's agenda. That would mean that you're going to be amending your application and noticing now?
Right, uh, perhaps the word was inartful in that we would certainly need to renotice, um, so. Uh, um, carried was putting out the right word, which is the, a vote postponed to a future date without dismissing the application.
And you would, um, take a look at any new ordinances and how that might interact with? Would you do that kind of? Can that kind of work on it so that we, it could be clearer, or is that, am I asking?
I think so, and, and I'll apologize that since, since Rawson's on his phone, I don't think he's seeing. Um, but, you know, the, the original, so the, you know, the three, or the three variances that were initially granted were, like, I'm not going to, uh. Those are. Those are variances that relate to, uh, existing development pattern of that neighborhood for area width and depth. Um, uh, Jim Kyle was the planner back then and, and testified, you know, those are classic C one. Variances and, and, um, you know. If some combination of the variances that any house would need, and the ones that were previously approved could be grouped together. With justification, you know, obviously, we're here tonight asking for an extension and not, um, you know. Prepped and noticed for, uh, a planner to try to pitch. Why, you know, you should grant us relief from the new neighbor could character rules, but. Do, not voting tonight would, would allow us a, a combination of those things, obviously, it seems like the, the stormwater really wouldn't be, uh. Um. On the, on the table at that point, um, but the, some combination of, of design of the home. Uh, rest the, the variance, you know, that I think the two items that Derek. Um. Picked up on is just the driveway design, uh, which I think could be remedied, um, and. And seeing what we could do with the, with the front-facing garage, if there's something. In between what was initially approved and what would be, uh, as of right now. Um, you know, again, considering the neighborhood, there are plenty of projecting, uh, this is not quite like a, a neighborhood where everything is U-shaped or, or, or front-facing. Um, but, you know, there's certainly some examples of that in, in this cul-de-sac, so we, we may be asking for some. Combination of that relief based on what the, the neighborhood supports. Um, but again, I, I'm reading the leaves, I, I heard, you know, the, I heard ambivalent, which was, uh, um. The closest deposit that perhaps I, I'm reading on, on the extension request, um.
It's up to you. It's your, it's your call.
Yeah.
Yeah. But. Also, take a quick look at your, uh, your, your phone if you can, Jeremy, just a. There's a couple texts from you there.
Okay. Michael, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I like that idea. I think it's also very considerate. Um, of the, for the neighbors of the neighbors. Because I think, unless I understand it wrong, when you notice for this hearing, it's just regarding an extension. You know, there, there wasn't issues that the neighbors could consider. In that notice. And I, I think your offer to open it up to them again is, is good in hope that you, yeah, that's my comment.
Well, appreciate that, and, and just while we're deliberating via text here, um. I'll, I will note though that we, uh, you know, the, the notice, the, the notice requirements were kind of above and beyond. Here, we, we sent a certified mail and also a regular letter kind of explaining this by regular mail too. Um, you know, with, with the background on this, uh, so I, I think the lack of people here probably is a, a statement that, um. Um, you know, as to, to, you know, the neighborhood's. Balance between letting this sit there for a while and, you know, what was previously approved, um. Pardon me, pardon, apologies, uh, when, when we're in person, we can elbow each other and, uh, and converse with the microphone. Uh, Jim does not afford, ask anything other than text, so apologies for, for, uh, for a moment, um.
If you want to take a moment to consider this with the applicant, that's fine.
This could be two minutes for, uh, for a phone call, um.
Okay.
And you all see the Q and A, or is that just something the vice chair and chair can see?
Uh, we can see it.
I noticed it. I was going to bring it up, but. I'm glad.
Well, this mentioned to you, we have an anonymous.
Okay, well, it's. Okay.
The neighbors would appreciate this idea.
Alright, well, it's an anonymous comment, so we can't.
Yeah, alright, um, thank you and, and appreciate, um, the, um. The, uh. Bearing with us while we, while we discuss, um, I, I, I think what we, what we discussed, I'll say not caring, but tabling it so it could be. Some of these issues could be looked at, um, and then renoticed, um, uh, for the variances that we ultimately need. Uh, at a, at a future meeting, um, we'll, we'll discuss with the planner that did this initially. Um, as well, uh, Mr. Kyle, um, and, and I do think. Um, look, there are some site limitations here, it may not be possible to move the, the garage back, as I think some of you kind of hinted at, but. We understand you can't grant that tonight, and, and as accommodation, I, I appreciate this. This way of, um, dealing with it so that, uh, this property and neighborhood isn't, you know, sent to the back of the line while it be fully redesigned, um, for six months.
Just one, one question, Mr. Bridger, so if it's tabled. Until such time as the applicant. Comes back to you and asks, you know, now they have amended the plan, have amended the application. Um. Then you still need to review it anyway, right, for completeness, or?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so.
So we'll, we'll need to, to amend the application, I'm sure there will be, I know there will be different fees, you guys are very kind for extensions and escrows, it's like forty-five cents. Um, but we'll, we'll need to submit the updated fees, and if we are going to be seeking those variances, revised application. Um, uh, for that, so that Derek and, and, and the rest of staff can, can review it.
And you'll have to coordinate when, when you'd be on the agenda with Derek.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next hearing. Is case number Z twenty-one dash one thirty, one thirty-one. Hold on, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, it's. Where? That was Morgan, now we have, uh, twenty-nine Lee Avenue, I'm sorry, it's, uh, KC twenty-one dash one oh six. Twenty-nine Lee Avenue. 29 Lee Avenue, block 6905, lot 31. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Kimberly Burey and Edward Markey are the owners and applicants of 29. Lee Avenue. It's located in the R9 district. It's also in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. They are seeking a C1 variance in historic preservation plan review. To, uh, remove the existing front to back gable roof and replace it with a higher hip roof and four new dormers and exceptions to the required smaller and combined side yard setbacks. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the 6,500 square foot requirement, the existing 3,000. Lot width requirements 40, uh, subjects not complying with both lot width and frontage, uh, at 30 feet. And the, the existing property itself is not complying with regard to the smaller side yard setback, the requirements five and, um. It's, it's plus or minus, uh. Five feet and the combined side yard setback is, uh, six feet. And the combined should be 15. Isn't it Witherspoon Jackson Historic District? And, uh, as soon as I'm done with this memo, you'll be hearing from Elizabeth Kim. Uh, regarding the, the, uh, commission's review of the application, so. The applicant's proposing to remove the front and, uh. To back gable roof and replace it with a higher hip roof for four dormers. The height of the new roof complies with the, uh, applicable height requirements. The area will feature a new master bedroom suite and will add roughly 230 square foot of living area. To expand a bedroom and add a full bath. It requires a smaller side yard setback requirement on the. Left side, the requirement is five, the proposed is 1.1. And it requires a variance relief from the 15 foot requirement for combined side yard setback, whereas the proposed is 6.7. Um, they request a consideration under the C1 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address your concerns, any, try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Bridger? Okay, um. Ms. Kim, would you like to summarize your memo?
We just need to place you under oath. Ms. Kim, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wrong, Kim.
Sorry.
Um, so the, um, the store preservation commission, um, reviewed this application on February 7. And, um, the applicants came in to, um. Request the demolition of the roof and the chimney as part of their application to expand. And convert their attic space to accommodate the new master bedroom suite. Um, this property is a two and a half story, single family house within the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. And it is a contributing property within that district. Um, the applicants represented that they have lived in this neighborhood for a while and. Their family has expanded in size, so that is the reason they're requesting this, um, expansion of their property. Uh, after hearing that and the testimony from the applicant and the plans that they reviewed, HBC voted unanimously. To recommend to your board approval of the variance and the application, um, regarding. Um, section 10B dash 390, which HPC reviews demolition. Um, they also approved removing the upper roof. And the chimney, however, they did request that the chimney. Um, on the exterior remain that they secure it within the attic. So from the exterior. It is seen as, um, a, a visible feature of the historic building. Um, they felt that the improvements the applicant was making was appropriate and consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Um, if there's any questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay, um. We'll be, uh, presenting the application.
I am, um, the architect.
Ms. Lowry, uh, why don't we swear you in? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And you are the architect of record for this project, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
I, I think the fact that you're licensed. Would, uh, be sufficient for us to hear you.
Um, yes, I'm licensed in New Jersey and Florida, um, if that matters, since, uh, 2014. Sure. Um, so. I believe, um, I'd like to start out by, we could hear a brief. Description from the homeowners as to why they are looking to pursue the variance and, um. Then Laura Watson is the designer on this project. She would be able to walk, um. Us through the drawings regarding the dormer and the added space that we're adding, um, up in the attic over the existing home.
All right, why don't we swear in, um, the owners and the applicants, Ms. Burry and Mr. Markey?
There's a lot of interference all of a sudden. Yeah, and when you muted your, your, uh. Okay, please proceed.
All right, um, Ms. Burry and Mr. Markey. If you would, uh, raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, just to speak a little bit about our project to kind of reiterate what, uh, Ms. Kim had stated earlier. We, uh, purchased the house, uh, in 2015 and we were a family of three and we're now a family of five. Um, we're active members in the community. Our children go to school. Um, locally as well, and we're hoping to continue to stay. Here in the neighborhood where we've built our, our home and our lives, um, we just need a little bit more space.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicants? Okay, proceed.
Um, I'd like to share my screen if that's possible. I can just walk through where the nonconforming dormer is and.
Ms. Watson, just before you testify, if you, uh, me to swear you in, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do, yes.
All right, and Ms. Watson, um. You are. If you could just tell us.
I, I am a designer on the project, not licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm working. With Courtney as the licensed architect on the project.
And you are a licensed architect also, you said?
I am not a licensed architect.
You're not? Okay, it's all right.
You are a designer?
I am a designer, correct.
Okay. All right, proceed.
Thank you. Um, okay, so. Um, I thought I'd start by just showing in elevation, uh, where, oh, I'm sorry, could I, may I share my screen? Is that possible to, to share?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Start by sharing the elevations. Uh, so the project really is about changing the roof line from this existing cat slide roof to a hip. Uh, roof with dormers on all four sides. Um, and the nonconforming area comes here on the left side of the project, um. This is right up against, it's about a foot, foot and a half, a little over a foot and a half away from the lot line, whereas we need five feet. Our project doesn't, um, the propos- the proposal doesn't. Step too much farther in, um. See if I can zoom in here. Can see here, this is the existing roof line, the dashed line is the existing outline of the roof. And, um, this, so this hold a lot of, large portion of this dormer and this roof here. Would be in the nonconforming space, but within the existing footprint, um. Whereas where it steps out additionally would be a few inches because of the hip roof, um, versus. You know, the existing, uh, the existing side doesn't have an eve, so it doesn't have that, that, um, bump out there. And I can show. A little more. This is from the other side. It's, it's symmetrical all the way around, um. And then this, this is the side of the house that is nonconforming. You can see this fence is where the, approximately where the lot line is. So. It, the, this portion of, of the third floor and the rest of the footprint is nonconforming. Uh, our changes would really be sort of stepping it, sloping it back in portion, a portion of it, so. We felt that it wasn't, uh, too overwhelming for the neighbor, that it would be actually a little more comfortable for that, um. That portion of the lot, um. And you can see, is there? This is, this is the angle from the other side. We don't unfortunately have a rendering that really shows that well, but, um. You can see that it kind of comes back a ways. And isn't, uh, as monolithic against that, um, that lot line. Yeah, so that's sort of our, our proposal, um, and I'm happy to ask, answer questions. I'm sure Courtney is also happy to jump in. Um, this, this lot size is, uh, it's substandard. It's. About 3,000 square feet versus the required 6,500. So in this area, um, it's a pretty common lot size for this. R9 zone, um. And, you know, we wouldn't be really adding, we're not, we're not adding any, any additional footprint to the house, just the roof eve comes out a little bit farther.
Can you go back to the elevations, specifically the side elevation that's in question? So the. Okay, yeah, that's it. So the, uh, this elevation in the lower left. Is the, what is the distance from the? I'll call it the, the dormer with the window, the new dormer on the side to the lot line.
Let me go to the plan. Uh, I'll show you. Here. In our site plan, um, where. Uh, at 1.06. Um, I think, I think our, the zoning document listed it as 1.1, uh, feet off of. Um, and that's really a, a matter of inches and rounding, um. But it would be.
But the wall is back from that, isn't it? What I'm getting, what I'm getting to.
The dormer would be 1.7 because it would, it would be, uh, to the existing, where that is, the existing, um. Wall is.
Okay, the, the reason I'm asking, does the building code allow you to put? Glass in a wall that's that close to the property line? Now, I know, I recognize that there are existing windows there, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a new, new window. Are you allowed to do that? I, I question whether you can. I mean, you can build a dormer in theory, but whether you can put glass in it. Um, is another issue.
There is, um, regarding the, um. IRC with it being a single family house, I believe within zero to five feet of the setback, it is a percentage, um. Of the wall surface area and that. Um, of the dormer. So I would double check that the glass is within the limits and that would also have to be a fire rated wall, um, as well.
Okay, but you do feel you can put glass in it? I mean, the glass would be a percentage. Of the entire wall and the existing windows that are there.
Correct.
Okay, all right, you'll verify that obviously from a building code standpoint.
Yes, it would comply with, um, because of the proximity to the setback.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that was the only question I had.
And then just in regards to, um, follow up with what Laura said. The new, um, soffit is encroaching on the setback. However, when you look at the elevations, um, right there that we were looking at. The existing front skirt roof, which you could see down the bottom at the first floor. That roof has an existing 12 inch overhang. So the overhang for the new hip roof will still be stepped back from the. First floor existing overhang. So basically what I'm getting at is we're not encroaching in the setback any further than what that front. Bottom porch roof is already encroaching.
You're not increasing the, the amount of the nonconfluence.
Exactly. We're essentially staying over the existing house in order to give them a more livable. Master bedroom in the attic, um. So that the kids can be comfortable on the floor below. Currently, um, everybody is residing on the second floor, so it'll. The reason for raising the attic is to give them some additional living space. In the second floor where they currently have living space, we're just expanding it for a bedroom and bathroom.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members have any other questions?
Are there air conditioning units that will be on either side of the house?
The decision on the, the air conditioning, there will be a, a condenser added, um, I believe at some point, uh. But it wouldn't be on this side. I mean, we wouldn't put the, the air conditioning condenser right up against the slot line, um.
It wouldn't fit.
Yeah. There's no place for it over there. There, there would be a plan to ideally add some air conditioning because you can imagine addicts can get.
Okay, and that, the location of that condenser, if and when it does go in, has to be reviewed by our zoning officer?
Okay. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, Ms. Lowry, what we're going to do next. If there are no more questions from the board, if you can make a. Statement, you are the owner, and then we'll go open the, uh, hearing up to the public.
Sure, um. Ideally, the application, um, as stated before, they're proposing to remove the, um, current. Uh, attic space to raise the roof and, um. Again, the roof height will not exceed what's permitted by the ordinance and the four. Dormers, there is currently an existing dormer on the front of the house, although it will be removed and reconfigured. They will have. A hip roof with four dormers on the four sides in order to give the space for the bedroom, um. An interior renovation will happen at the same time, obviously to get stairs up. To the bedroom and some reworking on the first floor and in the basement to give them an updated space, um. They absolutely want to stay in the house in the neighborhood and we're just. Expanding the use of the house so they get more longevity out of it for a longer period of time. Um, I think based on the. Um, as I said, the HP, the HPC found this application favorable and. The issues creating the variance are nonconformities of where. The existing house currently sits, which the owners really don't have, um. They can't do anything to make those less or better, um. So I'm not sure if the owners have anything else to add to that.
Ms. Lowry, a quick question. I believe Ms. Kim indicated HPC did have one, um. Recommendation or recommend, recommended condition on their approval. Is that right, um, Elizabeth?
Yes, it has to do with the chimney. Um, they wanted to demolish the chimney, obviously to be able to open up their, um. Their floor plan on the different floors, so, um. HPC understands that their, their stand is that they would like to see that chimney remain. Um, and if they could just stabilize it in the attic space and. That way it's still visible from the exterior.
Is that acceptable, Ms. Lowry, to the applicant?
The, um. I guess the question the, uh, we and the applicants have regarding that chimney is it's a very old. Somewhat damaged stucco chimney, um. Would there be, would it be favorable to keep a chimney and rebuild it or potentially rebuild a? Wood frame chimney, which is clad in some type of masonry, um. That wasn't something explicitly discussed at the hearing other than keeping the chimney, which we would be willing to do. So I guess my question is what exactly would we be, would we have to repair and keep the? Existing chimney, although it's on the back of the house and not in the best condition?
But I guess the question I would ask is, um. How bad a condition is it and to what extent would you need to, uh, repair it versus? repair it versus rebuilding a new one?
That, yeah, you can kind of see it up there.
I think that HPC would be willing to work through that administratively.
Okay. I mean, we're okay with the condition. I'll default to Kim and Ed. I believe we're, we're definitely willing to work with the HPC on the chimney issue.
Guess we're happy to work with you about that.
Okay.
Okay. You want to take down the screen, please?
Sure.
Okay, so back to our executive session. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll open this up to, excuse me, not executive session, to, to public comment. I'll open this up to public. Steven, are there any, anybody in the audience that wants to comment on this?
No.
There are no hands.
Okay, okay. Let's just give it a couple of seconds here, in case somebody pops in. All right. Hearing none will close the public portion of the hearing. Ms. Lowry or the applicants, if you'd like to make a, or the designer, if you, any of you would like to make a closing statement before we go into executive session. I take that to mean no? Okay, so hearing no closing, we'll go into executive session. Board members, do you have any questions or comments, or would someone like to make a motion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm, yeah, I made a motion, Steve, to approve.
And I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. No, ask a question.
I'm, I'm curious as to if there's a, whether it makes any difference. Maybe we can't even ask the question, but what is this going to do to the, what's the proposed property value going to change on this property with this addition?
I have no idea how to respond to that. Can anybody?
I mean, I don't either, but I was just curious whether whether those are issues or not, that we care.
It's a great, it's a great area in Princeton and it's changing quickly and I think obviously to the better and, you know, a lot of people are trying to acquire properties in that area, which obviously will cause property values to rise and justifiably so.
I mean, I could respond to that. Just because we've seen a lot of applications come through for that neighborhood. And obviously when there's a property that has improvements done, where it extends your square footage, I, it will increase their property value. However, I don't think that it will be as much as some of the properties that you see that are going in that neighborhood that are actually expanding to such a large square footage or demolishing and building new. So I, I would feel like this is a fairly modest improvement to the property. It's staying within its, its footprint. In addition, the neighbors, I mean, the property owners are actually wanting to stay in this neighborhood, which I believe the residents within that neighborhood really appreciate. They want people to be living there, not buying it and selling it, you know, flipping it.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question. Will this change the number of bedrooms?
Yeah, so we add a bedroom. So they'll be adding a, a master bedroom or a primary bedroom on that third floor and giving them some more space. They've had a couple more kids since they moved in, so.
A bedroom and a bathroom, I imagine, right?
Bedroom and a full bathroom.
Yeah. I have a question from Ms. Kim. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask, but about the, the chimney. So without just a recommendation on the chimney, it just seemed, it's on the back of the house. It seemed like maybe, I'm not sure, I'm just kind of questioning what that really gaining by making them put a false chimney on the back of the house is gaining as far as character to the neighborhood.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of property owners come in wanting to take out the chimney for the same reason. Because they want to be able to, you know, obviously the chimney goes all the way down to the first floor and sometimes the basement, if they have a finished basement. So that way they're allowed to open up their floor plan and have more flexibility in redesigning their interior space, which HPC has no purview to. However, they are interested in keeping the exterior feature. So a chimney is considered an exterior feature, which is part of the star character of a house. And if you go down the street and you say, oh, none of these houses had chimneys, when they actually all did, that does start changing the character.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand that certainly, but th- this chimney is not running up the side of the house. It's kind of protruding from the roof. So it's, it seems to me a little bit different, but I can, I don't, I don't really have a dog in the fight. I'm just, it would just seem to me this is a little bit of a different, slightly different situation and it's on the back of the house and kind of in the middle of the roof as far as, rather than on the side being a feature. Just my question.
Yeah, and, and, and it's, and I understand, I, I think that because they have had so many applicants come in, want to remove it. They, their position now is that they ask or they request for them to keep that chimney and secure it in the attic space. So it is visibly seen from the exterior. And yes, it is in the back, but you know, some chimneys are in the back, on the side. Sometimes, you know, they are in the middle. So.
Okay.
Actually, Jim, I'm glad you raised it. I was going to ask you and Michael and the board too, is this approval then going to include the HPC recommendation and we can kind of modify that to say that the applicants would work with HPC with respect to retaining the chimney and the materials of the chimney, et cetera?
So Karen, I have a question about that. I believe, let me just, I think that in the memo, it does reference section 10B dash 390, which HPC actually does have review of demolition.
Right.
Even though it's in the board of jurisdiction for the, whether it be zoning planning. So it, is that accurate that any demolition requirement would solely be within HPC's purview? Or is that not the case?
No, I think that's correct. I think it is. But I think, what I'm trying, what I was trying to clarify was if HPC's position is that's a condition of their own demolition approval, because we've been talking about the applicant working with HPC. So I was really just trying to make it clear in the resolution so that we don't find later that.
It also like that retaining the chimney, it would not extend past the new dormer. So for it to work and look sort of correct in that location, it would also need to be extended somewhat vertically.
Okay, I, I think that we could work with that to make it look appropriate with the new roof line.
Let me just ask another question. I'm trying to look at the plan, but just, is the position of the chimney critical? I mean, I, I'm not looking at how it's set up, but if they're going to put in like a gas fireplace, I mean, could it be in a different location in the building? Or do you really just want to have a chimney coming out of the house? Because I mean, because it could be a functioning chimney with like a gas fireplace. I don't know. Maybe I shouldn't even step into it, but it just seemed to me that you want a chimney, but you don't really care about the position of it.
I believe that the applicants want to remove the chimney because it's in a position that limits their floor plan changes. Is that correct?
The chimney is also, it's being removed as part of the upgrade to the heating system. So the only thing in this chimney is the heating system. There's no fireplace. There's no additional venting needed. And as Laura mentioned, the chimney would have to be reworked once the roof is raised and the new dormers are put on, but something as simple as, as I suggested, even doing like, if you think about a kupola on a house, which is decorative, we could overframe some type of wood chimney on the back of the house. It is about gaining the space, but it's also about the chimney just not having functionality in the new floor plan.
Understood.
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I guess Ms. Kim and, and the applicant, I mean, could it just work with our condition saying final disposition regarding the chimney would be subject to the approval? I mean, if HPC.
I would think that would be very acceptable.
And then work it out. If HPC says, no, you don't have to have the chimney or HPC says, no, you have to have it, we still want to stick with that. Fine. But with that kind of condition for us, it takes us out of it and resolves it.
I would, I would think that's acceptable. So as long as, I believe, did you make the motion to approve, Michael, or who made the motion to approve?
Michael.
Michael. So as long as it's okay with you and the person who seconded the application, the, the recommendation, then I'm okay with that. I think it's fine. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Claudia, can you call the roll?
Bolson? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes. Thank you. Enjoy the house.
Thank you so much.
Not necessarily the construction, but enjoy the house.
Steve, can we take five minutes?
Certainly. Okay. All right, it is, what time is it? It is 9:05. We will tune back in at 9:10. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, we have a few seconds to go here. Are we all back? We're still recording?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll be back in session now and our next hearing is case Z21 dash 130, 131 Mountain Avenue, block 6804, lot 27. Oops. We'll wait till Derek comes back in and he can summarize his memo. Oh, there you are. Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Derek, before you review them, I'll just note that the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't ask. Derek, you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, no problem. Can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Kenneth and Linda Twining are the owners and applicants of 131 Mountain Avenue. They're seeking C1 and C2 variants relief to permit the construction of a two-story addition to the rear elevation of the subject property in exception to the required height to setback ratio. Properties located in the R2 zone in the former Princeton township. The existing single family use is permitted as of right. Subject lot is not complying with regard to the required 65,340 square foot lot area. The existing is 35,880. Not complying with regard to the required 175 foot lot width in frontage. The existing is 75 feet. And the, the house is not complying with regard to the height, height to setback on the right side of requirement. For both are 1.5 to one and they're both non-compliant. The subject property is located in a suggested historic district and the HPC will offer comments. The applicant's proposing to construct an approximately 800 square foot two-story addition to the rear elevation of the existing house. The addition will provide a larger kitchen and family room on the first floor and an expanded master bedroom suite on the second floor. Results in increasing the existing degree of non-compliance with regard to the height to setback. Height to setback on the right side, the requirements 1.1. Um, height to setback on the right side of requirements, one point five to one, to one, and the proposed is one point five to one point nine six eight. The left side requirement is the same, one point five to one, and the proposed is one point five to one point three three. And they've requested consideration under both the C one and C two criteria. Have any questions? I'd be glad to address them. Elizabeth's here. Um, the HPC did review this application. They do have, have, uh, some comments.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Bridger? Uh, okay. Uh, Ms. Kim, can you summarize your memo?
Yes. Um, again, this application was also reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission on February seventh. And, uh, this application was referred to them for review because it is within the suggested Mountain Avenue Historic District, which is historic preservation element within the Princeton Master Plan. This, the house on the property is a colonial revival style. It's two and a half stories high. It is recognized the property has a narrow lot of seventy-five feet, which is probably the reason that it necessitates, uh, variance relief. The HPC reviewed the application and they determined that, um, that the addition, which is located in the rear, was appropriate. And they actually appreciated in which the addition was added, its proportions and its transition from the existing house to the proposed addition. Uh, the applicant was commended for that. And with that, they, um, strongly supported the approval of this application with the variances it seeks. Um, they also commended the applicant because recently they had done some recent work on the property where, uh, aluminum siding was removed to reveal original wide with beveled sideboards, which were scraped and painted, and there are new period shutters that were installed on the front of the house. Only thing that, that, that really was of discussion was the parking in the front. Although after the applicant and architect made their presentation, uh, the reason that they felt that it needed to be in the front is because they were having a very difficult time backing out. And because of the vegetation along the street line and the amount of pedestrians walking along the front of their property where mo- many are traveling to Mountain Lakes Preserve. After, um, some discussion, they supported the, um, construction of the parking space in the front to allow guests to actually access the front door and also allow, uh, the guests and the residents to be able to back out and pull out forward onto the street. Um, so with that, if anyone on the board has any questions, um, available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, board members? Okay, let's start the presentation. Who will be, uh, presenting this?
I'll be presenting along with Linda and Ken Twining.
Okay.
Mr. Hayden, why don't we swear you in? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and the architect of record for this project, correct?
I am.
Thank you.
And, yeah, you've testified before this board many times, so we will accept you.
Are you saying I'm old, Steve?
Um, not directly.
Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So Ken and Linda approached me to help them design an addition. They've lived in the house for, I believe, twenty-eight years, Linda. Uh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, I, I think twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years.
Mr. Miss Twining, we'll swear you in too, in case you want to provide some testimony. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the house is built in nineteen thirty-nine. It's, uh, one of three on, um, mountain avenues that are on, uh, kind of similar era and similar narrow lots. Uh, there's a house, uh, to the right of the neighbor, um, that has a larger lot. And then once you get past Henderson or before Henderson, the lots are narrow again. So we're here tonight because of the narrowness of the lot. Um, we made all the, um, coverage and, um, other type of setbacks. Um, the addition is all towards the rear of the house, so you will not see the addition from the street. Um, we are proposing a parking area in the front. Uh, part of what Linda and Ken want to do is continue to have their guests come to the front door, not park in the back. The garage is rather close to the back of the addition and very close to the back of the house as it exists. So once you get your car back there, it's very hard to get back out. And yes, backing out onto Mountain Avenue is fairly dangerous because of the private hedge between the Twining's and their neighbor to, uh, to the right of their house and pedestrians. There's only a sidewalk on that side of Mountain Avenue. There's no sidewalk on the other side. So, uh, there are people walking up and down the street and it's very blind. They have done restoration work to the house recently and, um, I think, um, you know, we're, we're asking the C one, C two because of narrowness of the lot. I think, um, the addition will be very quiet. It won't, uh, be perceptible to anyone. Uh, we're asking for a variance that will not, um, hinder the land use law ordinance and will promote all the good things stated in it. Linda and Ken, why don't you describe briefly what we're adding to the house and why you wanted to add this space?
Um, do you want me to say it? Um, so we're adding, um, most importantly, a, um, master bathroom upstairs. We currently, um, have one and a half baths in this house, um, which really makes it, you know, according to modern standards, functionally obsolete. Um, so we want to fix that. So that's obviously on the second floor. The first floor, we're adding a family room and an expanded kitchen, just to enhance the house, you know, add a little bit more space. We don't, we have a living room, dining room, kitchen. We don't have a family room. So I think that the space that we're adding to the house really modernizes it to today's standards.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, that, I think that's, let me show you a few pictures, if I can. Uh, there's a, this is the house before we started taking off the aluminum siding with, uh, some, uh, shutters that were not in the best of shape. Let me try to share another, okay, new share. This is the house after.
Did, are these, uh, photos fairly current? Did you take them or the twining?
Yeah, no, I took them and they were submitted to the, uh, Historic Commission for their application.
Why don't we mark all these photos? We'll call them exhibit A one. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, so that's how the house looks now that we've taken off the aluminum siding, restored the wood siding. And as Elizabeth pointed out, period shutters, the shutters have, uh, uh, fir trees cut out in them, which is a real colonial revival type of detail.
Would you go back to the first slide, please? I'm sorry.
Sure, if I can. Yep. That, you, the telltale signs of aluminum siding is the cover plate right here on the corner. And you can see the chalkiness of the siding. The paint was coming off, so the, the photograph actually looks better than the reality was. And we had a dead tree. We had a dead tree.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Here's a little diagram which shows the site plan. The site plan you all received has a lot of lettering. And it really kind of makes it look like we're paving the whole front yard. We're really not. We're just doing two slots. There is a bit of a, about a two-foot, I call it a ha-ha, but it's a, a small rise in the land. So that's why we have a retaining wall there. And that way guests can really park here, come to the front door, and then they can back out and come out onto Mountain Avenue. There is a private hedge that runs all along here. And it's really for privacy because the neighbors next door have parking right here. And then there's a hedge and a hedge out front on this adjoining property. So the sight lines are really quite tight. Our height to setback ratio is, there we go. Sorry. Uh, you can see where our addition is exceeding the height to setback right in this area and in this area. And for that matter, the whole house is, uh, exceeding it. But we're, you know, hiding it behind the existing ridge and we just wanted full height ceilings in the back, because the addition really isn't that big. And, uh, we wanted to maximize the height. And I really think that's about it. Uh, I can show you the front elevation real quick to show you that, you know, see it from the street. That is the front elevation and you will not see the addition from the front. So we're asking the board for the setback. And also, I, I guess, I'm not sure if we're asking for parking because may not be allowable with the neighborhood guidelines, but we think that we can do it sensitively and make it an attractive area. The homeowners will be parking in the back. This is really for guests. Back to you, Steve.
I was gonna say, you're not proposing any habitable space in the attic area?
Uh, the attic has a pull-down and, um, Linda and Ken are opening up their wallet and getting air conditioning on the second floor.
Okay.
It will be inhabited by ductwork and an air handler.
Okay. Kind of window.
Yeah, there's a window out back and there's two vents on this side, and that's a, a whole house fan that will get replaced with a window.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Um, anything else you'd like to add? Max?
No, I'm sorry, Steve.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Twining, do you want to say anything?
I think Mac did a, a good job describing what we'd like to do.
Okay, well, all right. Board members, do you have any question of the architect or the applicant? Okay, um, let's open this up to the public.
Uh, Steve, either no, no attendees, uh, attendants.
Must be something else going on in Princeton tonight.
More exciting than a zoning meeting.
I can't believe that. Okay, so, uh, you know, public comment will close the public portion. Um, again, once again, Mr. and Mrs. Twining, Mr. Hayden, do you want to say anything before we go into executive section?
I really like the background of Elizabeth's, uh, with the Golden Gate Bridge.
It is kind of nice.
And you're Derek Bridger. There's two of them this evening.
That's it. I'm, I'm, uh, not a reasonable Derek Bridger. He does a much better job of being himself than I do. Okay, so let's go into executive session. Board members, any questions or comments? Or would someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve this project.
Thank you.
I could second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Sir, uh, Ms. Paulson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Must be bedtime. We better get home.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't think we have anything else to discuss unless somebody has something they want to bring up. Uh, we will have our next meeting next Wednesday evening. And, uh, we'll go from there. Derek, how many, how many cases will we have next time?
Um, it's, it's actually a cases on, uh, March twenty.
Derek, March twenty-third.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, we don't have a hearing next week.
No.
We have, uh, three cases on that hearing, and then we have, uh, four on the following hearing on the following Wednesday, the thirtieth, so.
I got you. Okay.
We're looking at doing another meeting like you're correct. We were looking earlier, but it didn't work out, so. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you all and we'll see you next month.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.